Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us for the legislative oversight hearing on the recent fires in southwest Baltimore. I'd like to thank all the agencies that we have present. Sonny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff for Public Safety. Deputy Commissioner, is he here yet? Michael Sullivan. Colonel Sherry Briscoe. Colonel Richard Worley. Lieutenant Colonel John Herzog. And Major Latonya Lewis. And from the Fire Department, Chief Ford. Chief Ready and Chief Casey. Did I say it wrong?
Case.
Case. I'd also like to acknowledge the Council President, Scott, to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohn. Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Bullock. And Councilman Burnett.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilman Bullock, whose district is the one that has been experiencing this recent rash of arson's.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And again, thank you, Council President, for hosting this. You know, obviously, this is a situation that's affected us very deeply in southwest Baltimore. Many of our neighborhoods have been experiencing terror of these fires. Unfortunately, we know that we have a serious issue with vacant housing in Baltimore, particularly in the Ninth District and in southwest. And so some of our neighborhoods, like Carrollton Ridge and Montclair, struggle with vacant housing. We are happy and pleased that the Police Department did make some initial arrests regarding this, but we know this is an ongoing situation. It's not just on the Fire Department, which we also thank you for putting your lives at risk in terms of stabilizing some of these buildings, but it's also issues in terms of code enforcement as well and boarding up some of these houses that have been vacant. Again, you know, we want to have an all-hands-on-deck approach to this. We know that some of our neighbors are quite frightened. They are disturbed by what's happened within the community, but we are still hopeful that we can come together, find solutions. So hopefully today, we can think about being proactive as it relates to these issues, and then how we can also address them moving forward. So again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention to this, a very serious issue.
Thank you very much. Council President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, everyone, for being here. Chief, as you know, we were in communication often through these incidents, but I think that it's important that we now go back and look at them and see what's going on, what remains, but also to keep the lines of communication open. As the councilman said, we had unfortunate incidents that led to a lot of fear and a lot of fear and terror for many of the residents in southwest Baltimore when these incidents were going on, just in the communication with the community, just hearing the fear in their voices and understanding that something was happening that they did not absolutely know of. But I want to first thank you, the Fire Department, all the men and women in the Fire Department for all their work, all the men and women of BPD for their work to try to get a hit of this issue. But now, we're just going to discuss what happened and see what we can do better in the future, but also what else needs to be done to wrap this issue up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll turn the floor over to you, Chief. Do you want to... Yes, Senator, go ahead.
Sonny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff, Public Safety in the Mayor's Office. Just want to speak very quickly. We really appreciate the opportunity to kind of walk through where we are and the status of these incidents and kind of think through proactivity. We're, of course, very, very pleased with the hard work of our public safety agencies. I do want to remind the council, a lot of these are still active investigations. So while we will be as open and candid as we possibly can, there are just going to be some things that we're not going to be able to be responsive to right now. We're happy to have private briefings and can, you know, as information as we kind of close these cases, can are happy to kind of reconvene and, you know, share with the committee where we are on those things, but did want to flag that ahead of time. I also want to, kind of as a reminder, and as we think about being proactive, wanted to share, you know, arson, along with a handful of other crime types, is something that's very prone to, the more you talk about it, the more it happens. It's a copycat crime. So I think as we think about proactivity and think about what we can do moving forward, I just want us to kind of be thoughtful in framing the conversation around prevention in that light. But again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. We appreciate it.
Sure. And before we turn over to the chief, who will just give us an overview of just the incidents that have taken place, who is, who is leading the investigation into these cases? Is it the Police Department or the Fire Department?
Collaboration of both. It's coordinated between the Police and the Fire Department.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It's coordinated with the Police and the Fire Department.
Gotcha.
Okay. But the Fire Department ultimately has, has oversight of investigation of the fire. First of all, let me, I want to, I want to certainly thank the members of the Baltimore City Fire Department and how well they worked, but I really want to thank the Baltimore City Police Department on how hard and how well they worked to, not just to find a person of interest, but when this started, we began working together right away, and not to just investigate the fire, but also to curb the situation. We were out every night, coordinated, literally going block to block, to try to make sure that we could navigate and basically bring to an end this situation. So I'm going to go over the incidents that, that happened in Carrollton Ridge Community, Carrollton Ridge Community, and also Boyd Booth as well. On December 2nd, 2019, Baltimore City Fire Department notified Baltimore Police that the fires, that fires may be suspicious due to the total fires that were occurring in the same footprint in a very short amount of time. The Baltimore City Fire Department began deploying special operations for mobile fire watch in the area. And mobile fire watch at that time, we were running from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. In addition to BCFD, FIB, the Fire Investigation Bureau, police arson, Howard County Fire Canines, and the Office of Emergency Management, all were on the scene and on the footprint during that time. On December 4th, as more fires occurred, Baltimore City Fire Department stationed a mobile fire watch in the community from 8:30 PM until 2:00. Basically, not just the Fire Department, the Police Department did the same thing. Basically, what we did was, we had apparatuses riding around with lights on, literally going from block to block. And we were assigned two, two engine and trucks, an engine and truck basically each hour on the hour, as well as Chief Savella, we didn't mention his name, Chief, Acting Assistant Chief, Chief Savella is behind me, I think he's on my left, right shoulder. He is over operations. He was out there the whole time, as well as I was, the Fire Chief. We had several members of the organization, and we all had our lights on riding around that area. On December 7th, Baltimore Police stated that they may have a person of interest, and issued a release and picture of the possible suspect to the media. We, literally, I think, the Police Department, I don't want to speak out of turn, I think they got the person of interest from one of the community members, a picture of the person. Later in the evening, on December 7th, Police Department notified Baltimore City Fire Department and the community that they had apprehended a possible suspect. By Sunday, December 8th, Baltimore Police arrested, possibly arrested two suspects in relationship to the string of fires that were being set in Carrollton Ridge Community and Boyd Booth. Great number of fires remain under investigation. I want to run through the fires really quickly, if you don't mind. The first fire happened on Sunday, December 1st, 10:41 PM, 2026 West Pratt Street. At this time, that, the disposition of that fire, it is considered to be as arson. 11:49 PM on December 1st, at 299, I mean, 299 South Pulaski Street, at this time, that fire is under investigation. December 2nd, 2019, 12:50 AM, 2005 McHenry Street, that's another vacant, that fire was, is under investigation. In fact, all these are vacancies. 1:53 AM on December 2nd, 2008 Eagle Street, under investigation. 8:10 AM, 2019 Frederick Avenue, that has been deemed to be arson. December 2nd, 1:33 PM, 1902 Willem Street, that's under investigation. Two minutes later, 1:35 PM, 1928 Willem, same block, under investigation. 2:33 PM, 1804 McHenry Street, that has been deemed as arson. 3:12 PM, 1900 Ramsey Street, that is being considered as arson. 3:20, 2114 Willem Street, that one is under investigation. 4:01 PM, 1400 McHenry Street, that's, that's under investigation as well. Wednesday, December 4th, 8:34 AM, 303 South Gilmore Street, that one's being considered arson, has been deemed to be arson, rather. 3:40 PM, 316 South Calhoun Street, that is under investigation. 7:04 PM, 415 South Smallwood Street, under investigation. Friday, December 6th, we had four fires on that day. 4:27 PM, 2421 Christian Street, arson. 4:46 PM, 528, 528 South Benteelow Street, that has been deemed as arson. 5:42 of that day, of that evening, rather, 3:31 Freor Street, that is being deemed as arson. 5:44, 215 Furrow Street. Just making sure. The updated information I have on that one, that one has been deemed as arson as well. 12:23, the next morning, Saturday, December 7th, 2019, at 12:23, rather, 2021 and 2023 Frederick Avenue, those are under investigation. December 7th, at 12:46 PM, and I should tell you about 12:23 AM, the one that happened on 12:23 on Frederick Avenue, literally, there was a unit that was doing fire watch that called that fire in. They pulled up on that fire. 12:46 PM on Saturday, 1913 Wilkins Avenue, that one's under investigation. Wednesday, December 11th, 8:05, 1400 McHenry Street, that one's under investigation. Friday, December 13th, on 2, at 217, 301 South Fulton Avenue, that is under investigation as well. Just as Sonny said a little bit earlier, there's going to be a lot of things that we won't be able to talk about because so many of them are under investigation. As we talked to the community, one of the things they said, "Well, can't you just assume that they are arson?" No, we can't. We have to do our due diligence and investigate these incidents to make sure we follow, follow them to the end. We have a very good coordination between the Police Department and Fire Investigation Bureau and the Fire Marshal's Office. And it is our goal to exhaust all of these, to make sure that we're accurate on calls because every one of them, just like over the next couple of weeks, if we have other fires down there, they may have no relationship to what we just dealt with, or any other fire in the city, for that matter. So we want to make sure that we're deliberate and accurate as we go through this process. We understand the fear and the concern of the community, and we're doing everything we can do to get out and educate the community and get out ahead of these fires. The challenges that we certainly do have in the city is that these are unoccupied dwellings, they're vacant houses, so we don't have early alarm systems to let us know they're going on. And we do have, we do have challenges with a whole lot of other issues that are unrelated to what we may be talking about arson. Case in point, that we have people that are homeless that may be seeking shelter and trying to stay warm. Case in point, literally, we may have people that are possibly using in these structures and accidentally cause a problem. So we want to be deliberate. We want to show our due diligence on going through this process. At this time, I'll step down and leave for any questions for the Fire Department?
Counselman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might seem very simple, but Chief, can you, what, can you define for us what arson is and what, and what it looks like? And part of the reason I'm asking is, and you mentioned, you know, that we've got significant number of vacant structures where people get in, and sometimes fires ignite in those structures, you know, maybe, you know, unintentionally, but the fact is, if somebody's in a vacant structure and they're using, and there's no utilities...
Right.
It's, you are in a scenario that more often than not, it's not going to end up, you know, in a good outcome. So can you, can you define what is arson, what you all determine to be arson? And if somebody is in a building that they're not supposed to be in, and they use, they know no utilities are there, and a fire starts in that building, is it, you know, essentially arson?
Okay. To, I'm using your last statement, I'll go forward for that. Your last statement, I'm going to use as a question. No, it's not arson. Accidentally set, anything that's accidentally, I mean, set, you could, you could accidentally set your fire, I mean, cooking at the stove and actually set a fire, that's an accident, right? Anything that's intentionally set, deliberately set on fire, and I have Fire Marshal behind me, but I'm using, I'm using a layman definition, anything that's intentionally set, even if it's yours...
Right.
If you intentionally set it on fire, that could be deemed as arson. Okay? The challenge that we have, and PD has as well, is that when, I don't, my biggest, I have a bunch of concerns. Our biggest concern is the fact that we never know who's in these fires if they're intentionally set. We don't know who's in these buildings or in these, these sections of row houses. I mean, as, as I said earlier, someone may be seeking shelter, right? But also, some of these row houses were not vacant for the whole block, they had residents in it. What happens if it gets beyond the Fire Department? Right? The other thing, PD and Fire Department, as we get these fires and we, we jump in our vehicles, hit lights and sirens, go flying down the street, PD's putting their people's lives in danger, flying down the street to try to make it to these incidences in lights and sirens, and so are we. And our folks are being endangered by going into them. So we're doing everything collectively we can do to make sure these kind of things don't happen.
No, and I don't disagree, and obviously, the, the subject matter of tonight is specific on southwest, but just several months ago, we had, you know, over a four or five-month period, number of fires in, for example, the Matthew Henson Community in West Baltimore. And now, they were never determined to be arson, but in the same breath, if any of those fires would have got onto the next adjoining houses in that block, we could have still had the same, you know, we could have still had the same gravity of fatality. And so I guess my point is that, in the city of Baltimore with so many vacancies and so many row houses, we've got to treat every fire, I mean, and not saying that you, that you aren't, but we've got to treat every fire with the same sense of severity and same sense of urgency, because whether it be arson or whether it be a vagrant in the building, the outcome could still be catastrophic for our city.
All right. I completely agree. Not too long ago, I think it was last week, Chief Savella, if I'm wrong, you can tap me on this one. Last week, we had a house fire in West Baltimore, a vacant house, unrelated, as I said, and we had some people that had to call, some, some of our folks who went in there and had to call for help because they fell through the floor.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And that's dangerous. So we, we treat every incident like it's an emergency. We have to.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And we'll turn it over to BPD.
I had, I had a second question, if I can.
We'll just, can we just, we'll ask the questions after.
Okay.
Because they're going to present the same thing, and then we'll turn the page over.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. On behalf of the Baltimore Police Department, Major Lewis, who is the commander over the arson section, will go a little further into detail for the cases that we can discuss, recognizing, acknowledging, just as, I'm sorry. The Schnitzer just stated that there, for the active cases, we cannot discuss.
Gotcha.
Good afternoon. So in reference to the cases that were just mentioned, for the pattern that we're seeing, it's pretty much the southern and southwest. So between the southern and southwest, we have a total of six cases that have been deemed arson. Out of those cases, three, we have made an arrest on. As the chief said, on December 7th, we arrested Sean Crainer in reference to two locations. And on December 2nd, there was arrest of William Ritchie for the third case. In reference to the arrest, as the chief stated, there was an eyewitness in reference to the case in the 1900 block of Ramsey Street. He gave information to uniformed officers on what he saw, and that's how we were able to make that arrest in reference to that arson. The two additional cases, we have footage from Ring video that police officers observed. They put out Metro Crime Stopper's flyers, and the district units went out and did patrol in the area, and they were able to find the individual with the same clothes on that he had on leaving the scene of the fires.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your great work that you guys have been doing alongside with the Fire Department. First question I have, so in reading the staffing study, one of the things that the consultants recommend is disbanding the arson team in BPD. Is that something that the Baltimore Police Department supports?
So, I know Commissioner Harrison isn't here, and I'm going to just step in on this one. The staffing study is out for public comment, so we're holding all of our commentary until we've had the opportunity for the public to comment, and then we will reconvene as an organization with our partners and examine a little further. So at this point, Councilmen, we just would like to hold that until we get the public comment, recognizing that, yes, it is, and the document stated that way, but we're, we're holding all comments, and the Commissioner will come back out and say what his stance is after we have the public comment period, because traditionally, when it's out for public comment, we just do not comment. We'd like for them to weigh in.
Sure. So I guess we can allow this to be the first comment, that clearly, we see in this case that if it wasn't for the great work that, that you guys have been doing at BPD with the arson unit, perhaps these arrests wouldn't have happened. And so the first comment I would make is that we probably should take a really hard look at, at reconsidering what the consultant is recommending in that case.
Noted, sir. And I'll take that back to Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel, and thank you, Major, and thank you, Chief. I have a few questions for you guys, but I'll start since we were just talking about the total amount of cases. So Major said that there have been six total cases of arson in that year-to-date for 2019?
Not for 2019. These dates are from 12/1 to 12/7, the cases that we have in reference to the southern and the southwest.
So six, okay, total. How many total for 2019 do we have?
For 2019, we have a total of 88 cases compared to 92 in 2018.
Thank you.
And of the 88 cases, how many of them still remain open?
So we've got 35, 35 closed.
Oh, no. Major, make sure you're talking to the mic, sorry. The guy, he popped out the back room and said he couldn't hear you.
Out of the 88 cases, 35 cases are closed, and for, I was trying to give you the arrest board, and we have 26 arrests in 2019.
You gotta, you gotta talk into the mic.
I'm sorry.
It's televised, so that we can hear you.
So out of the 88, out of the 88 cases, 35 are closed, 53 are open, and we have 26 arrests for 2019. If you go back to 2018, there were 92 cases where 29 are closed, and we had 28 arrests.
Thank you. And I don't, because I'm not trying to do math, do you have the clearance rate in front of you? Well, I can do it if you need me to.
The clearance rate we have for 2019 is 40%, and I would like to say the, the national average, I believe, is like 12%.
It is. Thank you. Thank you for that. So that was very helpful. And when you guys are clearing these cases, how has it been dealing with your partners on the judiciary side? Have these, have we had a better working relationship in clearing the arson's and working with the State's Attorney's Office?
You want to speak on that? Matt Alonis?
Lieutenant Matt Alonis actually works the cases with detectives, so I'm going to let, allow him to speak on his, on that.
Hi, sir. Brian Matt Alonis. Our partners in the State's Attorney's Office are working with us all the time to get these cases to conviction. As the chief and Derek Ready, the Fire Marshal for Baltimore City, will agree with me, these are very tough cases to put together, basically reconstructing a fire scene of things that are burnt up, evidence that are burnt up. So that's why these cases are complex and take some time for the Fire Department to get information to us and for us to coordinate with them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both for all your hard work. So this, Chief Ford, this is a question that's really for you. Can you go into, let's just say, because we've also had that rash of fires along the Emmonson Village Corridor and Councilmember in that district, can you explain to us, let's just go back to these 17 fires in the southwest, the level of coordination and communication that took place with you, not just you and BPD, but other city agencies as these incidents were going on? So for example, if you had houses that you, a bunch of houses that went up in flames on the 4th, as you knew, were vacant, did DPW come out immediately the next day to board them up? We know that in that neighborhood, we've had issues. Talk about that coordination, coordination, but also, what communication was being relayed directly to the residents of that neighborhood, and what, how were we getting that information out to people?
How you doing? Chief Savella, Acting Assistant Chief Operations. So what happens is, is once a fire's completed, we notify our Communications Bureau, the last unit on the scene, or the chief that's leaving the scene, he'll notify them as to the property address, and then also whether there's a pile of debris in front blocking or impeding, and what it's blocking or impeding, that it's communications, will they have notified Department of Public Works, at which at that time, they'll come, they should come and take care of that. Our units go out, if no one, if it hasn't been taken care of within a couple of days, then we re-notify the Department of Public Works in order for that to be done. So me and Chief Ready have been talking about a possibility of working as far as some type of email address or something for the boarding up people to possibly notify them as well.
Assistant Chief, I'm going to jump in here and talk to the deputy chief for a second. Deputy, I think that this is something that's easy, no, sorry, deputy chief, yeah, Mayor's deputy chief, sorry. This is something that is easily to be fixed, right? So these gentlemen, if you're especially, if you're even down to a battalion chief and you are in a specific area, you and I know that there's someone who, in DPW and every agency, is responsible for basically the same area, and they should be able to have that, they shouldn't have to call into communications to communicate that we should board up a vacant property that we know was vacant after there's been a fire. That should be an automatic thing, and then we could also build in that level of accountability at that lower granular level, so that you don't have to be in it, that Matt doesn't have to be in it, that I don't have to be in it, and Chief Ford doesn't have to be into that level of detail. It should be a happenstance that people at that level in agency should be communicating with each other consistently so that these things happen, not just as a, as a, as a practice, not just because this is something that happens because we had 17 fires. I think that we have to have that agency coordination from top to bottom so that these things aren't happening, because this is one of the things that I know, Councilman Bullock and, that I got, and then I heard from some of the men and women in the Fire Department about, is that these properties were vacant and not until the day, the morning that the mayor and I were due to be in that neighborhood where they boarded up. Now, there's a deeper discussion that we have to have, as Chief Ford notes, is that by the time we got there that afternoon, they were unboarded in many cases, so we have to have a deeper conversation with the community about making sure that the community is being safe and protecting ourselves when we're going into these kind of establishments and making, making sure that folks aren't doing that. But we have to communicate better. And Chief, for the, the second part, the question of that, how we were communicating with the residents in that neighborhood about what was going on? What kind of communication was happening with them directly?
What we did at that point, Chief Clark, and he's, he's actually going to another meeting in West Baltimore, basically talking about fires that we talked about a little bit earlier. We, we sent Chief Clark to get on the meeting, get on every news channel, to explain to them what was going on. We got on social media and sent out as much as we could, and we tried to make sure we were all on the same page as we delivered the message, just so people knew where we were at. And I do know, and I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, I do know as soon as PD had a person of interest... as PD had a person of interest, they put the word out that they had a person of interest, so, so the, uh, community would have, maybe not resolution, but a sense of calmness about what was going on in the community. Um, they were very aggressive about that, so we, we worked together on that, and I'm, and I want to go back to your first question, um, that's what, the last thing that you said, one of the things that we do know is that even when things are boarded up.
They get unboarded.
It gets unboarded. And we have a very good relation with DPW on getting them out there. It's, it's, and not saying it doesn't happen, but it's unusual for them not to come out and, and resolve those issues for us.
And then, Chief, and I'm glad that, and I saw all the social media stuff, and I think that's great.
Yes.
But I think that also, uh, we also have to make sure that's targeted, and I know that your wonderful PIO knows how to do that, and we can talk about other folks about targeting to specific geographic areas through the city's system that we send out emails and text messages from. But also, especially, it's critically important, when it's a neighborhood like the one that we were having these incidents in and we visited, we also have to understand that many of those residents don't have access to internet, and they, a lot of them don't have access to TV either.
Okay.
So, we have to figure out a way to get that information out literally on the ground as quickly as possible.
And if I may, Council President, I can tell you that the district commanders reached out personally to the community presidents and apprised them of everything that we were doing and the coordinated efforts, and when we had information to share, um, we shared that, as well as we deployed our NCOs to those neighborhoods to be able to, um, give a hand to the fire department with identifying those, um, properties that were vacant or unsecured to get city services back out. So, we've been working in concert on all fronts to include communication to, to the residents.
I was pulled aside by my bench team that reminded me, or told me that, that, um, our folks really went out to community meetings during that time, too, uh, as well as they did, they did safety sweeps, and they went door-to-door in certain areas in that community.
Thank you, thank you for that. And my, my last one, uh, now, for now, Mr. Chair, is, uh, Chief, and this predates you, and actually, I'm going to say a year that's very important to me, because the year I graduated from high school, but in two thousand and two, uh, BCFD had this joint agency arson task force in response to a bunch of fires occurring across the city. Does that task force or something like that still exist? And Roman's not here, so I know he would know.
Chief Ready would, I think Chief Ready would. Yeah, we, we don't have that same task force in place, and I thought that was the one. We put together one also a- after that time, that we were dealing with young people, and we had some challenges with some of the young people, um, but that task force is not, um, still in, you know, active. We stand up, uh, special teams as events come up, and I mean, they're like strike teams, and it's necessary for us to do it that way. And it's, it's a wise use of resources, because if we don't, if we just set up teams, they would do nothing during certain periods of times.
Chief, and if I can ask Chief Ready, Chief, if you know any of the history about that task force and what they're impactful and what they did, if not, we can follow, you can follow up at a later date, don't feel pressured.
Just a little, uh, Derek Ready, deputy chief fire marshal. Uh, that task force was, uh, bought up in two thousand and two, actually for the same area. Uh, we had a rash of fires in the same area. We created that task force, was, uh, BPD, BCFD, um, Fire Investigations. We brought in ATF, we brought in State Fire Marshal's Office, and we brought in various K-9 units from around the state to get a handle on the fires and to catch the arson's back in two thousand and two. And it was disbanded once we.
Apprehended.
Apprehended.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Councilman Finkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Chief Ford, how many fires have we had this year?
Sorry, I don't know the exact number for that right now. I'll, I'll have to get that to you, I apologize for that, I don't have that.
Then, then in addition to that, I wanted to know how many fires, how many of those fires are for vacant structures?
I'll have to get, I'll have to look that up as well.
Can you, can you tell, can you tell me, so what, what triggers an arson investigation?
Generally, what, what, come on, Chief Ready, generally, there's a couple of ways it can be triggered. Um, the responding units could actually trigger an arson investigation by requesting it.
What triggers an arson investigation is when the first surviving units get on the scene and they want, one of two things happen. If they can't find the cause of the fire, they call the fire investigation unit, or if they think the fire's incendiary, which is arson in nature, they will contact the fire investigation unit. Once the fire, one of the fire investigators get on the scene and they confirm that it is an incendiary fire, they will contact police arson, and that, that triggers the arson investigation.
Okay. I, I wanted to go a little bit further in that, but n- not knowing the number of fires that are happening in vacant structures, and I, I kind of can't, but if I, if, Mr. Chair, if I can.
We'll make that a request, if you can get that information back to the committee, how many fires and how many were.
You want to know calendar year, sir?
So, I, I mean, just, I'd like the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, just as, um, um, some of the lines of questioning. Can I ask, um, another question, sir? Um, I, I would imagine that Baltimore is not too much different than many of the, many urban cities are there, um, and so, as the fire department discusses this matter nationally, are there best practices for securing vacant properties that, that are a part of your, your dialogue that maybe we already applied here in Baltimore, or that need to be applied as far as securing and maintaining? I know it's a, you know, it's a yeoman's task, but I'm, I would imagine that in your conferences, you've got to be talking about this.
We do, we do talk about dealing with rashes of unexpected fires, uh, even fires in vacant dwellings, uh, but most areas, and who I, who I normally communicate, to be honest with you, are the metro fire chiefs, and I don't mean that by region, I mean metro fire chiefs by, uh, fire departments that have more than five hundred members. Uh, because those would be urban areas, and they'd be, more often than not, they're all not urban areas, but they'll be closer to us. But one of the things that we do know is all of us have, um, idiosyncrasies to every municipality. We probably are closer to Philly than most other places, um, and I have not talked to them about that. More or less, we've had conversations about dealing with vacant structures, and each one is different. Like I said, we deal, uh, I think around sixty percent of our residences are row houses. Yeah, around sixty percent, but we're unique like that. I mean, us in Philly, maybe a couple of the places, but every place else, they're mostly single detached homes. So, that conversation hasn't come up, and then when you start talking about securing it, uh, because securing it is not a, a, a duty of the fire department or the police department.
Correct.
That wouldn't be a normal conversation that we would have, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, if you, if you are ultimately responsible for responding, if there's an issue at those locations, I would think that you should be a part of the conversation on how these properties are secured, the, the way they're monitored, the way they're maintained. I, I would, I would imagine that you should be on the housing commissioner's back, like, come on, what, what's going on with these vacant properties and them being secured? Because my men are in peril going to these vacant structures.
We, we have, we have conversations with them, not just at my level, but at the level of our members on down, continuously about it. Um, but I, I keep in mind, uh, just as, as the last event when we walked around the community, things that we knew were boarded up that day, the boards had been removed. And, and even, even if that being case, um, the building was having a conversation about how they could better secure these areas without endangering the population at the same time.
Um, if, if I can, I have one other question, but I don't, I don't know the sequence.
Uh, Count, I'll, I'll send it back to you, Councilwoman Snead.
I'm sorry, I'm, I think I missed it, was one person charged for multiple fires?
Come to, come to the podium, Colonel, sorry.
Three case, three cases, um, are closed by arrest. One suspect has been charged with two of the arsons.
And is the person homeless, or?
Yes, he does not have a fixed address.
And?
Both.
And did neighbors believe or say that this person was living it or had seen being in the area?
Had seen lea- leaving the dwelling right after the fire broke out.
Okay, and so, this is quite normal for this time of year when folks are trying to stay warm, or?
Yes, and it's sometimes known to, to pretty much, want to call it homeless activity, because the homeless people sometimes go into dwellings and they're trying to keep warm, which can cause fires.
And so, is our, I guess, is this something for our homeless services as well to work in conjunction, because we don't want the person to go back to jail for getting out and then setting another fire? So, is there some kind of link between homeless services and, um, when you're charged multiple times for a fire?
Um, I'm not sure, but, um, I can reach out to the unit that we have in the agency to give them more information on the cases, to see if they can go out and give more information and get flyers about what's going on and, um, awareness.
Thank you.
Council President Scott.
Thank you. Chief Ford, this is just a, uh, basic question, how many fire fatalities have we had this year? In comparison to last year?
Fourteen. Yeah, thirteen fires, fourteen fatalities.
And how many did we have last year?
Yeah. He said ten fires, twelve deaths. I was going to say fourteen fires earlier.
Yes, sir.
But, one of the fires that you were speaking of in the, in West Baltimore, that they assumed was a fire fatality, it was not.
Okay.
Um, and next question, too quickly, very quickly, no one was injured in any of these seventeen fires, right? Thank you.
No, no citizens nor.
No citizens.
Employers of the, of the fire department.
And last thing is, uh, do we still have any programs we work with kids in schools, teaching them about the dangers of setting fires and things like that?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm done, Chair.
We still have a robust, uh, public education program.
Thank you, I'm done.
Councilman Finkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Council President, um, kind of talked a little bit about the process as, as it relates to DPW coming out and either boarding or clearing up the debris left over from a fire, and I think part of the testimony said that, um, it's reported, and then a, a unit may go back by that place to see if it was actually taken care of, and then, if not, it's reported back to DPW. What happens after that?
Usually.
Does a unit go back out again?
When they, when the suppression unit goes out after about forty-eight hours and they find out it's not been boarded, uh, they contact the assistant chief of, uh, operations, he contacts my office, then I, I have a contact over in DPW that I, uh, I'll text or call, and then usually, he gives me an affirmative that they will get back out. We have not ran into any problems where, once they were contacted, that the building was not boarded up.
This is, this is when we learn new things, too. Not only does Derek, does, does the fire marshal obviously call, so does Chief Savella. So, when, when we find out that they report up to his, if, if they find out that it hadn't been boarded up, or the boards had been removed, let me say it that way, because it could be just the boards have been removed, um, literally, Chief Savella, they, they're reporting through the chain of command, Chief Savella contacts his peer at that level, so we can go to a higher level to make sure it gets done.
So, so the chief has a database of these incidents in this communication?
No, no. What happens is, as, as our units ride past and check these structures, or ride passengers happen to see them, they'll contact their, their, their battalion chief, the battalion chief contacts shift commander, shift commander contacts chief Savella, chief Savella contacts his peer, obviously, they contact Chief Ready as well, which I didn't know, but it's, you know, I'll tell you, reputation is good for the spirit, so I don't mind that.
Can you come to the mic, that, that's off?
I don't want to speak completely out of turn here, because I know I'm going to butcher all of the different systems, uh, but I know both HCD and DPW do track that and, and track the both internal and external requests, um, and, and I think, at least, is it bi-weekly or monthly, we track progress on, on those requests and time to closure, uh, and we can get some, some information to you on, on what that looks like.
Mr. Chair, if I can make that request, I'd like to see that, and I, and I'd like to see it aligned with the dates of the fires.
Sure, so if we can, if we can get it, if we can get the, uh, the year-to-date numbers, but also, um, in particular, the specific correlations with these, if you can match it up. Go ahead.
Just wanted to make clear for the, uh, for the councilmen, I, I'm not sure if they track the, the, the reason what, um, would have necessitated the boarding, so, uh, if that information is available, we will absolutely get that to you, but they would have.
But wouldn't it have the, who?
Mr. Councilman. We should have it, I.
Yeah, I, I think so, I just want to be, I just want to be clear that.
Mr. Chalmers has these exact addresses, and we have the date, so we should, we'll be able to track it. But I think what's even more important, he hopefully will also have a second one for many of them, because they had to re-board them, which brings the discussion about how we do boarding, and is it secure enough, or are there other things that we need to do to make sure that they remain after we put them up in the first place?
I mean, we, we just had a hearing talking about three-one-one and inconsistencies as it relates to, um, certain activities, and I hope that we, we don't find that there's the same level of inconsistency when it comes to, um, response to, you know, after-fire cleanups and boardings. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, this, uh, hearing is now adjourned. Uh, thank you all for attending. Please check the area around your seat to make sure that you have everything that you brought with you.